All right.
Mr. President, we're ready.
Good morning. Good morning to each and everyone. Beautiful day here in the city of Mobile, Alabama. And we're going to turn it over for our pre-council meeting to the very capable hands of our city clerk.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, March the 9th. We have approval of minutes from March 2nd.
Good job.
Appeals, we have requests for Waves of Noise ordinance on March the 27th from 7:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. This is at the Brad Mitchell Mansion. Every Sunday in March, April, and Public Safety Park from 2:30 to 6:00 p.m. March 20th, from 3:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. on Brookly Avenue. Public carrying, today is the public carrying to declare the structures at 1205 Belkor Drive East, 724 Kentucky Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. We have a presentation of the Parks Employee of the Month. Sean Smith will do that. And Reggie Hill has requests to be, uh, two agenda items. 08139, 31148, 6161, 09168, 31177, and 178. Essential COVID-19 items held over. 40101, declaring the structure at 709 Mandrell Street a public nuisance and order it secured, demolished.
Is Mr. Dawson on?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Dave's, if you can hear me, I am here.
Okay, could you tell me about this one, please?
Yes, sir, this was held over for us to review. And as I recall, the owner came down, it was a Mr. James Pryor. And he requested some additional time to repair or make some repairs to the property. Our follow-up inspection this morning shows that the, uh, the condition of the property is still the same in regards to the garage slash storage shed. Uh, it is, it's still in disrepair as the photographs of the application were submitted. Um, there's some roofing problems. And as the application submitted is that we're requesting to move forward with the demolition of the garage, uh, storage shed and secure the main residence.
Okay, thank you.
21125, authorized management agreement with Mobile Botanical Gardens, 38015.
Mr. President. I had an email from, uh, the attorney for the botanical gardens last night. And he asked if we can hold this over one more week. They are continuing to negotiate and it looks like they're close, but, uh, they're not quite there. So just one more week.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rich.
38015. Orders to amend section 38 and 24 of the city code to permit the transfer of unclaimed property held by municipal court to the general fund. 64016. Orders to rezone properties located at 5001 and 5009 Cottage Hill Road from R1 and B2 to B2. 01136, authorized agreement with Alabama Pipe and Supply Company for the EPA Gulf of Mexico Trash Free Waters Grant Project. 03137, concurring the reappointment of Larry Jackson to the Altapoint Health Board of Directors. 03138, appoint the Honorable Freddie Stokes to the position of adjunct judge for the Mobile Municipal Court. 08139, approved purchase order to Donna Hue Chevrolet for three Chevrolet Tahoe police SUVs. 08140, approved purchase order to Dennis Aluminum Products for decorative signposts. 21141, authorized performance contract with GCB Entertainment for Gulf Coast Challenge. 21142, authorized contract with RICO Signs for Trinity Gardens Park Dodge Community Center marquee sign replacements. 21143, authorized contract with Bagby and Russell Electric for an access control system upgrade to the Mobile Alabama Cruise Terminal CBP offices. 21144. Authorized contract with Johnson Controls for an ionization tube replacement at Gulf Quest Maritime Museum. 21145, authorized contract with Ozark Striping Company for application of thermoplastic striping marking and legends on various city roadways. 21146, authorized contract with Harris Contracting for Spanish Plaza lighting upgrades. 21147.
Hold it, hold it, hold it. Do we have a, uh, Archeneke on?
Yes.
Uh, do we have a DBE for that one?
We have a woman-owned business for that one. And I thought I'd think that information to you all.
As long as you say, uh, as long as you say we have a DBE, I'm not talking about a WBE. Do we have a DBE, at least 15% DBE for this?
Uh, let me get that form and I will verify it with you before the meeting is over.
Okay.
21146, authorized contract with Harris Contracting for the Spanish Plaza lighting upgrade. 21147, authorized contract amendment with Barter and Associates for last stadium structural repairs, phase two. 31148, authorize a 2021 Arts Culture and Community Assets Grant, uh, grant application to the Daniel Foundation of Alabama for mechanical upgrades to the Sanga Theater. 21155, authorized contract with Jason Eversole for medical director services for Mobile Fire Rescue Department.
I have some, I have some questions about that, if I may.
Uh, Ms. Rich?
Good, and I see, I see the fire chief is present, at least his little icon is there. Um, normally we use an in-town, uh, medical personnel or person. Um, can I just have what this is about using in someone from, I think it's the stadia, how this will work? Is the chief, Lammy there? I see him in the participants. Does anyone with the administration?
Yep, well, uh...
I, I just want to hear why it's not a local and it's a, it's a, it's a position, I get that. But it's, it's a corporation that's, um, going to manage the training and, and medical directives of the fire department. So I was just curious before voting, since this was...
Councilwoman Rich, this is Don Rose.
Yes, hey.
I, I worked on this with, with Jeremy. Dr. McMahon, who's been there a long time, uh, medical director is retiring, he's local.
Yes.
Jason Eversole just finished, uh, medical school, he's a resident. Uh, he's a former firefighter, uh, who's well attuned with the needs of fire service. I do believe he has intentions to relocate down here after he finishes his residency. Uh, but he is now a resident up in the Birmingham area, uh, finishing his, his training. But, but he is, uh, they think very, very highly of him. Yes, he will be coming down here to do the work that needs to be done.
Okay. It was hard to tell. Yeah, I know, and I appreciate that. That's why I was hoping I would get some, um, you know, more, um, in-depth information about someone who lists as an LLC. Cause I didn't know whether it was a corporation doing this because the hands-on and the, and the connectivity to, to our personnel, um, medically. So it, okay, all right, I mean...
Yes, ma'am, he, he created that corporate form as a way to, um, but it is just, yeah, he, he has a way to contract with us.
Okay, and, and so coming to Mobile, um, is, was that part of the agreement or just a gentleman's agreement?
No, it, it's, uh, it is part of the review, the travel to visit the stations. It's all part of the legislative, in the Alabama Administrative Code, it prescribes what the requirement, and it's referenced in the contract. It prescribes the requirements of what a medical director is supposed to do for a firefighting system. And so he's going to do those things and it's going to be...
Okay, it is actually him, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
I guess, Mr. Rose, what I, what I thought she may have been asking is the requirement, you know, you've, you've alluded to us that it's his intention to relocate here to Mobile after he's completed, uh, whatever residency is required for, uh, his, uh, you know, completing his doctoral studies. So is, is the actual move, him physically being here, is that a part of what, uh, what agreement he would be signing with the city?
No, sir, there is no, uh, specific mandate that he has to live in the city or in the region here to do that work. And I think that, because he's a resident now and, and doing that work, I, I don't know the detail of that particular piece of it.
And how long approximately will it take for him to complete that portion of his studies? Is there not someone here already with the, uh, and I'm not knocking Dr. Eversole. I'm, I'm just curious as to this unique arrangement that we seem to be, uh, moving towards. Uh, with, with real, with really nothing that's going to assure us that once everything is completed, that this particular individual won't stay in the Birmingham area and just come down and, and, and do the check, keep going.
Yes, sir, and I, and I will say that the fire system has an intention of also hiring a second physician to assist in this work as well. I, I, but, yes, I can't answer any more specific than that about Dr. Eversole. And maybe Chief Lammy can circle back with you after the meeting.
I think we need more information.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, thank you, Mr. Rose.
Mr. President, are we holding this over or are we just waiting until, um, Chief Lammy gets back to you all in between the meetings?
Well, I would, I would be comfortable withholding until we hear from the chief. Uh, this isn't an item, this is his surgery, isn't it?
No.
No.
No, it was last week.
You're right, you're right. Well, definitely, what, what is the pledge of the council?
Yeah, why, why the requirement for him to be local? If Jeremy feels like the guy can, um, can serve us and he's familiar with us and he's the guy who knows, he's a former firefighter. I mean, if he's the best guy for the job, he's the best guy for the job. And Jeremy will tell us if he needs to be fired. Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna call Jeremy and see if he'll come up on the phone. I don't know if Chief Oliver will do it or not. There's Jeremy.
I'm here, I'm here.
Great.
Sorry, I had to just jump back on the call there, I apologize.
No, no problem, chief. That, we, we're on the agenda item relative to, uh, the medical director and the, the doctor, Mr. Eversole out of, uh, the stadia, I believe, Ms. Rich, uh, was just saying. And so could you give us some more insight as to how that contract, uh, would work? Uh, it, it has been reported that there's a possibility of him eventually, uh, moving his residency to the city of Mobile. Uh, that's what was reported to us a little earlier. We wanted to know, is that anything in, in, yeah, kind of etched in stone? And just get more information on that particular item, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir, that's a great question. No, there's not nothing, there's not anything right now that's etched in stone. Um, he's completing his residency up there. Um, just, just so you know, we were extremely disappointed to know that Dr. McMahon was retiring. But he's been the medical director for so long, um, that he just decided it was time to kind of, kind of spend some time at home and not have to try to tackle this thing. But as far as the relationship that we've had, what we have in Mobile is a very unique, um, relationship with a medical director. And I think it's one that you won't find in many places throughout the state. In fact, most of the, most of the medical agencies, I've worked for a couple of them, MedStar is one of them that I've worked with across the bay. Never, I really didn't even know who the medical director was and they really weren't actively involved, um, in a lot of cases. And with a lot of agencies throughout the state, they're just not very involved, um, as much as what Dr. McMahon has been. And I think that you will, you will find that, and that's just a praise to him, the relationship that he's had with us and, um, how well he served our community and our people. Um, but Dr. Eversole was that fit where, um, he used to be a former fire medic with the Mobile Fire Rescue Department. Uh, he left the department and pursued medical school. Uh, we certainly would have liked, uh, for him to complete everything and then, um, establish that, you know, permanent residence down here and then hire him as medical director. But the timing was kind of expedited by Dr. McMahon. And we certainly didn't want to lose this opportunity to, to tie down Dr. Eversole to come and be a medical director. Um, we've been in conversations about other options. Um, we, we looked at several different options. Uh, but after speaking with the, the district chief of EMS, who's over all the fire medics. And, um, you know, Dr. Eversole was just down here a few weeks conducting training. Uh, and I think they're coming, Mobile's going to host the next training in the region. They set up training exercises throughout the region and they bring in medical doctors to be able to conduct that training with first responders. He attended one of those, I believe it was last month. And I think Mobile, we're trying to host one in April or May. And he's coming down to that as well. So, um, I think he plans to regularly attend down here. Um, a lot of what they do is QA, QI, they review the reports of what our paramedics are filling out. Uh, and one of the most important things they do is sign the drug logs, um, for what our paramedics administer. All of that doesn't, you don't have to be physically here to conduct that. Um, but we're, we are also looking at, depending on how this, uh, this goes, our first step was to turn this transition over into one medical director. And then we've actually been in talks with USA, uh, and another physician at USA to have a local component, um, if needed. And, and once he's kind of transitioned over into that role.
Mr. President?
Ms. Rich or something?
Uh, Jeremiah, my concern is that we are hiring a medical director. And, uh, we have a medical school here, just like they have a medical school in the, in the Birmingham area. We have a medical school here. And it seems to me, uh, that we're going to have somebody on our staff, we're going to call them medical directors. And we could have found one, one candidate, uh, from the University of Alabama, University of South Alabama. Uh, University of South Alabama's, uh, medical school to serve, serve, service in its capacity. That he may have been a fire medic, but he's not going to put out a fire. When the bell rings, he is not going to get on that truck and go out and put out a fire. So it's, it's, it's good to know all about the fire department, but that's not his role. He's the medical director, he's, uh, so, uh, that, I do, I do have a concern about that. Uh, I would like for us to draw as many of, uh, of the people, uh, to serve in, um, these type capacities from, from, without having to go somewhere else unless they, unless they're going to move. I wouldn't care where he came from, if he's going to live here. But if he's going to try to direct the affairs of the fire department out of Birmingham, I don't, I don't like that to him. I think, if he has some special skills that is difficult to find anywhere, I would say, but he used to work here, we like him. He doesn't live here, he can direct it from wherever he is, uh, uh, I don't like.
If, if I could join in.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. Uh, Chief Lammy, thank you. Um, I, I guess in looking the documents that we had, seeing an LLC and knowing what the past history is, and you, you've really articulated that about the close relationship of the medical director. Obviously circumstances have changed and you're doing the best you can. Um, I support what you're doing. I just wasn't aware when I saw that it was an LLC. I didn't know if it would be delegated to others. It sounds like it will still be hands-on as much as possible. And, um, I, I would definitely know that your office and your personnel will be monitoring this because it's an integral part of keeping your ISO 1 in place and making sure that only the best care and the medical aspect of it is, is, um, in place for our citizens. Um, it'd be great if he moved back, but you know, it's, it is a free country. And like I said, you, you've got a circumstantial issue in losing somebody who was, um, hands-on and a member of our community. It would be great if that could be the step. It seems like you're looking for that. And, uh, maybe you could just keep the council aware of the status and, and what's going on. Um, but I know we have to approve this if you're getting ready to lose your director of medical, um, affairs. And, um, so you don't really want that big gap and it seems like you picked the right person. I, I'm just relieved that it, that it's not some sterile corporation going on. So I, I've been relieved of my greatest, um, concerns about the transition of this. Thank you for your time on this.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. And, and it's a very serious decision. I, I hope you, you know, the entire council knows that we put a lot of, of thought into this process. And, um, you know, when, uh, when Councilman Richardson spoke about, uh, his special characteristics, one of the, one of the characteristics we did find was special is, is if one of, uh, a medical director has served as a paramedic before, um, we feel that that, that is a special skill set that directly correlates to what we do. They've done that job, they've certainly been on those ambulances and understand what our paramedics are going through. Um, we, we feel that there's going to be a higher level of comfort with our paramedics, uh, for that process. Now, just to be clear, we still get medical direction from any local hospital. If we have an issue, we call the hospital and they actually give on-the-spot medical control to our, to our paramedics. Meaning if they need to administer a medication, um, that requires approval, they call a local hospital. They don't call this person that's out of town. This person that's, the, the Dr. Eversole's main role is not that. His role is to evaluate and help guide our policies and procedures in, in correlation to our responses. His job is to sign the medication logs to get the medications, um, refilled at local pharmacies. And he reviews the, um, the reports, things like cardiac arrest reports and etc. To make sure that the medics are, um, filling out everything that they're supposed to do in the reports, that they are administering care up to the standard. That's, that's more of his responsibility. And also spearhead, identify areas that the department may need to do training. And then come down and help, uh, direct the, direct the EMS division to conduct that training and he also can attend it. But just so everybody knows, our medics, if they're on the streets and have an issue, they call the hospitals, uh, directly and speak to an emergency room physician that has a medical, uh, director number, control number.
Thank you.
Mr. Dave's?
Thank you. I, I believe that Chief Lammy just answered most of my questions, which was what are the duties of the medical director? Because to me, the primary issue is, are the duties such that they can be performed by someone who doesn't live in Mobile? And it sounds like to me, from what Chief Lammy said, that they are. Would that, I mean, there's nothing, there's none of those duties other than chief, uh, there's, I didn't hear you say anything other than to actually conduct training when, on a periodic basis that would require the medical director to be in the city, to be physically located in Mobile County.
That's great. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of, uh, Chief Lammy? Uh, thank you again, chief, for, for the insight and the information and, uh, Mayor Sidkirk?
Mr. President, um, Ms. Kidd has the response, has an answer to 21146 regarding the, um, participation, DBE participation.
Good morning, again, we have Ram 2, which is a woman-owned business with 2%. And Mayor Electric, uh, which is also a woman-owned business with, um, 25%.
How, how many DBEs do you have?
About none, just the two.
Okay, let me, okay, Mr. President, I would like to talk to my son, uh, to our attorney. Chris, did you get my message last night?
Yes, sir, I'll look into that. I just got it this morning, but I'll look into it.
Okay, I believe, I believe our orders, there's nothing in there about a woman-owned business. Uh, DBE, the D is disadvantage. It's, what's your word, what's your value? You can be a woman and be a millionaire. You can't, that's not, not going to cut it. It's about being a disadvantaged business enterprise, DBE. So you can, if that's the case, if somebody can come and say, I'm a MBE. Uh, some other kind of, we, we, we're trying to circumvent the system. If we start this, it's just going, we're going to wreck the intent, we're going to wreck the intent. It's not, WWE is not in our law, that's just something that somebody made up. So we, that is a way to, to certify whether or not you are DBE. They're not certified DBEs, but they say, well, we're certified, uh, WBE. What about a, a KBE, uh, somebody, that's, that's not, it's not, that's, that's not, uh, qualification, they, they don't qualify.
Mr. President?
Is that Mr. Williams?
I have, uh, you know, I, I, from the very beginning, uh, when, uh, Mr. Small and you and, uh, and, and all of us, for that matter, uh, asked Kobe Cooper years ago to form this office that, uh, Artenique is so well executing. Uh, our goal, and that was to, to be in compliance with state law. Uh, to have a best effort to make it happen. I think the better, the better question than does every contract, uh, meet our goal, uh, is how have we done in the last seven years? And I would, uh, I would challenge, uh, any, uh, administration and council combined, uh, for the same eight, you know, almost eight years to, um, to have matched, uh, this DBE, um, goal. We, we're doing that. And I don't, I don't want to leave anybody that's listening with the impression that, that this particular contract blows up the whole deal. Because we, we certainly have made a great effort and I applaud Ms., uh, Ms. Kidd and her staff and, and administration on all that's been achieved with regard to, um, the issue that, that, uh, Councilman Richardson is, is, is raising today. So I, we keep our, our head down, keep focused, it's important. Um, but, but we cannot, like the stock market, focus on it day to day and second to second. I'm going, uh, we're going to kind of get off kilter here a little bit, thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Richardson?
I have tried to, uh, have something to say each time we put one up here. John, permission, set the status on, um, how much the, the, the contract ought to be before we ask for the DBEs? We have gone along with him. We have not agreed that we're going to veer off the course and start letting other people bid as though they were DBEs. I have, and you can ask Archeneke, I have been diligent, I have not veered from the course. When I see one up here, I ask her, is it a DBE? What I see now is, is, it's not just this one, it's other ones in here where you got people saying, I'm a WBE. Because what they're pointing, oh, a WBE can be. So we got several WBEs in here, which is market out the DBEs. We have qualified DBEs for these projects. But, but, but the, the contract is saying, I'm not getting no W, no DBE. I'm going to start picking WBEs. It is our responsibility to keep this program on course. And I would say, lay this one over and give the contractor a chance to come back with DBE. And I would say lay this one over and give the contractor a chance to come back with DBE's. Let's keep this, let's keep this process on course.
No, uh, Mr. President, I, I'm just going to disagree. I'm voting for the contract that was here yesterday, last week. Again, it's a goal. And when we can prove all of the goal, or that we have not made a best interest accord with state law, I'll be the first to, to step in the way. But, but today, we need, we need to move forward unless we have some type of factual information to act on that this was a deliberate deviation from best effort.
Mr. President?
Mr. Davis?
You know, I would like to see what this, what the applicable statutes and ordinances say on this. Because I, I don't, I, I'm not sure that they use at least ours. I was looking through the Zogby Act. I know there's a provision in here somewhere that speaks to this.
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three?
Yeah.
And what it says is, city shall make reasonable effort to require that the contractor firm or company to which any contract is awarded must have reasonable efforts, must have at least fifteen percent participation by socially and economically disadvantaged individuals. Or the city shall make every reasonable effort to ensure that at least fifteen percent of the total value of such, all such contracts and agreements described above shall be awarded to qualified contractors or professionals who are socially or economically disadvantaged.
That's all I'm saying.
Mr. President?
Women, women fall in that socio-economic.
One, one second. Let me get Mr. Vice President and then we'll go to Councilwoman Rich.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And you know, I think Ms. Rich is about to say what I was just thinking about the, you know, the women part of being DBE. And I guess the only person really can just define that for our council at this particular time is our attorney. But my question is to Ms. Kidd. Ms. Kidd, thank you so much for your, your hard work. And I know you've been working hard very much in the past. But my question is, on this particular contract, with your mind, have the city did everything reasonable to, you know, to find a DBE for this particular contract in, in reasonable? Or is the women, in your mind, is considered DBE?
So the disadvantaged business means that they have to be both socially and economically disadvantaged. So they will have to show both. It is not that they are a minority-owned business or that they're a woman-owned business, that they are a disadvantaged business. It is that they have to be both and that's to form a race and gender neutral program that has been notified by the Supreme Court. A woman, there is a woman-owned business certification, but it is just that. It shows that they are a woman-owned business and that they fit into the small business standards. That's why we put into that ordinance, the two certifications, whether it be the Department of Transportation of which the City of Mobile is listed as a certifying member through the wave transit system with the Alabama Department of Transportation as a certifying body. So our wave transit system is a certifying member of the Department of Transportation's DBE program. We also included the Small Business Administration's certification for the disadvantaged business, which also has socially and economically. So they would have to be both socially and economically disadvantaged based on the Small Business Administration's guidelines. And it has both a personal network value of the individual as well as they have to be a member of one of those social bodies, which does include women. But again, it has to show both. Now, I have reached out to each of these contractors and given them the option of doing our section three, which would show the economically disadvantaged. And of course, we can see the owner if they're socially disadvantaged. The only thing, the only outside entity that we would have to get a certified letter for on socially would be a tribal Indian Native American. And they will have to show that certification from their tribal entity along with the economically disadvantaged. So we ha, I have been reaching out to them to ask them to do the certification, whether it be our section three or it be the Department of Transportation or the Small Business Administration, as well as with our veteran-owned businesses. They have to show that service-disabled veteran certification from the U.S. Veteran Administration. And normally with that certification, all they have to do is provide the Veterans Administration with a copy of their DD two fourteen and usually they go through the same size standards as what the Small Business Administration and what issued their certification.
So let me ask you this question, Ms. Kidd, and I, I just to break down the ice. In your mindset, as a particular time, the company that you said they have, I think it was twenty-five or twenty-seven percent and only two percent, do they, do they fit into caliber of a DBE or not?
I have not seen any financial records, so I could not say whether the financial part would, would match. I have talked with Ram two. Ram two has said that their finances would not match. That's why they have the woman-owned business certification. And we do, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Now, we do have some grants that specifically say a woman-owned business or a minority-owned business, but that's within those grants. Our particular ordinance for those city dollars that we're spending says DBE.
Let me ask you one last question. So since the, the two companies really don't, and you have not seen no financials, have the city done anything in a reasonable way in trying to find a DBE to go into this particular contract? For this particular contract, have they?
I have not talked with the, with architectural engineering on this particular one. So I would have to get with them to find out that information. But through my office, no, I have tried to contact those that they currently have to try and work with them to get them to where they are.
So in order, and this is my last statement, Mr. President, and again.
Take your time, Mr. You, we, let's get it understanding. Go for it.
You take Ms. Kidd so much, but you know, with this contract not being, you know, fitting the qualification of the fifteen percent, nor we don't have a complete understanding, you know, have the city did everything in a reasonable to find a DBE to fit into this particular contract. You know, I'm, you know, I mean, if it's not that, information's not there. I'm seeing no rush while we have to, you know, you know, pass this particular contract on today. And especially we don't have knowledge that the city did everything in its reasonable power. Thank you.
Mr. Ms. Rich and then.
Thank you, yes. And, and thank you, Ms. Kidd, for all that good information, especially about women-owned as far as being part of the social aspect and how the federal government interprets the need to get contracts to women, uh, which are, you know, been behind the eight ball. The, the thing that interests me and, and I think John alluded to it. When we say we're going to give everything the best case scenario to, to come up to that fifteen percent, is there a way, and I'm, I'm ready to vote on this, so I, I don't see the need to hold it up, but I certainly respect another council person's opinion on that. The idea that overall, how do we look in the course of the last, say, twelve months on all of these huge contracts and what percentage have gone to DBE's? You know, are we close to the fifteen percent? It is a best close effort. You, you, and I have to say, our department that was set up under Mayor Stimson with Ms. Kidd at the lead, and I was familiar with her, her great asset that she would bring because she did this with MOSS. And that is to work with businesses so they become certified and are able to bid on contracts. You know, Rome wasn't built in a day. It takes a little time. And so i- is there any sense where we are percentage-wise over the last twelve months? Because that would be more indicative of what it is we're trying to do. And has that improved from year to year with all of the knowledge base and information that you've given to businesses in our community that have business licenses?
So to answer, to answer your question, yes, we, we have had increases. The other part to that is there's also the compliance side. Once the contract gets up and running, making sure that those contractors are doing what they've committed to.
Right.
So I do follow that as well. We're still struggling on that side to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do. As far as them committing, in many cases, yes, many of those that we have have done absolutely what they set out to do in the beginning, but we have, we do have some that we struggle with.
But, but the growth has probably been most noticeable. And, and arriving at the fifteen percent, which is part of the Zogby Bill, was a best-case scenario to always make that a, an important aspect of contracting in our city. But you have to put some sweat equity into it, which Ms. Kidd is doing. And so I, I think holding up the contract, you know, that, like I said, I'll respect a council person's opinion on that. But this is electrification. It seems to be pretty, maybe one-source type thing. And I imagine it's a CIP program because it's a park. So I don't know where Mr. Manzi is on that unless it isn't a CIP project. We, we kind of said all our parks would come in as CIP. Whereas the buildings downtown would be more general components of our, our finances. So I, I'd be curious on that as well. But, Mr. Manzi, are you, is this CIP?
This Spanish Plaza.
Right, right. It's, it's Spanish Plaza, but I'm, I am not aware of this being a CIP project.
No.
So it, it's funding, is it a grant? Wh- where's the funds coming from?
It, it doesn't matter.
Well.
It doesn't matter. Ms. Ms. President?
Mr. Mr. Davis and then Mr. Rich.
Okay.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Mr. Ollidge, do we have, or Ms. Kidd, do we, is there an ordinance? Is there an ordinance governing this that is in addition to what's in the Zogby Act?
Yes. The, all right, so the Zogby Act you read off and the ordinance pretty much tracks the Zogby Act. And it also, uh, the ordinance defines socially and disadvantaged as meeting certain criteria that are set forth in several different federal statutes that I have looked at before and I have, I happen to remember that women are included in that. And the ordinance is section fourteen dash ten. And, you know, I think the DBE phrase isn't the key because that's not what's in the ordinance. It's socially and economically disadvantaged. DBE is a designation you can qualify for, as is WBE, but socially, economically disadvantaged is what our ordinance says. And that's what the Zogby Act says. It's pretty much mirrored language.
So you can, and, and, and under federal law, a, a woman-owned business qualifies as either socially or economically disadvantaged. Is that correct?
Just women in general are considered to be socially and economically disadvantaged.
So that we're, we're getting tied up in these designations when really, as far as we're concerned, in terms of what's in the Zogby Act, in terms of what's in our own ordinance, we don't use those designations. It's socially or economic, socially and economically disadvantaged. And that's, that's what we, and that can be a, a woman-owned bus, a woman-owned business falls into that category. And it's not tied to any ethnicity. It, it's tied to other things. So, so that, you know, that's kind of one part of it. The other part of it that I want to get back to is all the ordinances require is that we use our best efforts. And I think significant progress has been made and I want to congratulate Ms. Kidd for the work she's done. And, and when Ms. Kidd tells us that, that she has exerted best efforts to make sure that socially and economically disadvantaged businesses are given an opportunity to participate in this, then I take her word for it. I, I'm not interested in going up behind this kid and double checking what she tells me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson and then Ms. Biden.
Ms. Kidd, do you have a, a list, a list of DBE's?
Yes, sir, we do.
Could you say approximately, how many are on that list?
I would have to be looking directly at it to get a, a correct number, but I know we have over two hundred and thirty.
That's, that's close enough. When Ms. Kidd started, you know how many we had on that list? None. There is no question she has done her job. It is not her job to go find a DBE for a contract. The contractor, if the contractor can't find anybody, they can call Artenique, who has a list of contractors. It's, it's not her job just to, to fight them, you know, to go. They don't want elected not to use a DBE. They know where the DBE's are. They know where they can find the DBE's. They elected not to use a disadvantaged person, a company. They elected to do that. And they have, they're led to believe that we're going to, we're going to honor them and let them keep on going down that road. I think we need to keep this program on track. The issue is disadvantaged. Artenique has told you that is a formula they use to determine what disadvantage is and is used by the federal government, the state and everybody else. The City of Mobile, it seemed like to me, we're trying to figure out a way to say anybody can do it. It, it doesn't matter because it doesn't matter that I'm black. I fit in the class. It doesn't matter that I'm, I'm a woman. It doesn't matter. The issue is, are you a disadvantaged business? That's what the whole issue is. And that is, that is a standard. There is a way to, to determine whether or not you fall into that category. They haven't submitted anything to say that they fall into that category. They just put WBE, keep on rolling because they're led to believe that the council is going to stamp it and let them roll. If we don't hold them to the standard, it's not going to get any better. We have been doing good. We have been doing good to make sure that the money our taxpayers spend is spread out across this city and everybody can benefit from it. If we go down this road, that's not going to happen. That's what we're going to be doing, is our responsibility to hold up the standard, to make sure it follows a standard. I, I'll say, give these people a chance to get a, a DBE. If not, boat them down. Send a message to the industry that you've got to come here with qualified contractors. That's you're not going to get the taxpayers' money. This money was put here by all our citizens and that's what will benefit. And it's our job to make sure that they benefit. We will not be doing our job of doing anything other than.
Just a couple of things. Artenique, on every contract, especially something that is very specific and maybe like lighting upgrades, if you can't find, or if this contractor can't find a qualified DBE, WBE, whatever. If you can't find, or if this contractor can't find a qualified DBE, WBE, whatever, uh, are, are sometimes the, the projects that are done, is it, are they always able to find a, another contractor to come help in order to get them up to the percentage? Or, or do you find that sometimes because the projects are very specific to a profession that i- it's just not possible? Or, or how, how do you do that?
So, yes, ma'am, we do have some that um we, we won't be able to get participation on. Um, case in point. The um striping contract, uh, we do have a subcontractor or a DBE, a certified DBE who um does striping but does not do the thermoplastic striping. She only does the um, the regular paint, which would be in a temporary situation or one that is for, that we use for parking lots. Another case in point would be our elevator repair or our uh escalator repairs that we have. There are certain services that we do not have a DBE in those areas. And I definitely would notify uh the council of those when we get to that particular situation. But yes, there will be some who won't be able to get participation.
So on this, on this lighting, you have reached out to them and tried to get them to give you more details. Uh, I believe you said WBE or WDE rather. Uh, what have they said to you when you have contacted them for more information on this?
Well, again, with Ramtwo, when I um spoke with the, and I actually spoke with one of the co-owners uh with Ramtwo, and she explained to me that they were now a larger company. Uh, they have several companies, or several franchises set up all over the country and were no longer within that disadvantaged status. They are still a woman-owned business, however, um was not their economically portion of it was not um as to where they will be able to get the DBE certification.
Did they give you an indication that they might be able to make that happen?
No. She really wasn't interested in that particular one. I have not spoke with anyone uh from mayor. I've reached out and tried to get information on them uh to contact them. But um, I haven't had a return call at the number that I left the message at.
And this may be more for Dawn Rose because I'm guessing that Dawn handles a lot of this. Are there any other companies that would qualify that can do this particular kind of work?
We do have um some minority electrical company as well as a DBE electrical company um that is on the list. Uh, whether they reached out to them, that I don't know. Again, I have not spoken with the actual Harris contractor. But um, we do have two electrical companies on our list. And I can verify that as to whether or not they can do this particular kind or not.
That sort of begs the question there, if there are other companies that can qualify and this particular company can't, you know, what do we do then?
I, I think it almost kind of takes the teeth out of what, out of our effort. If, if we, if we, if hearing what Ms. Kidd has just articulated, we move forward. And she's got a list of two hundred and thirty, and of that two thirty, she's aware of those who qu- who would qualify, who could participate. Uh, and has made outreach to those who are associated, and, and they've either said that they don't want to participate or they've not returned their phone call. Uh, as much as I want lighting upgrades at Spanish Plaza, uh, I, I'm not in, I'm not a, I wouldn't be against holding this one up a week to see if we can find out uh some more information.
Uh, Ms. President?
Mr., Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, I, I'm agreeing with Councilman Dave three hundred percent. You know, if the city had put its forth its best effort in finding it, you know, then we should go ahead and, and approve the contract. But in this case, Mr. Dave, Ms. Kidd has stated that she does not know. It is, you know, the city had put forth its, its, you know, its best foot forward and exhausted, you know, its means. So she, she does not know that until we can get that answer. I believe that we should pretty much hold up, especially if we have DBEs on, on, on a list. Because I don't want to pass this and then go out there in the public and say, hey, I'm a DBE and I didn't get the opportunity, or I did not know about it, or et cetera. So I just rather for this to be out in the open, everybody had the opportunity uh to, you know, to be the comp, the main company contractor had the opportunity to reach out to the DBEs. And another week, I would think would not hurt that. I think it would give them an opportunity to reach out and then, you know, for the, you know, playing cards to just be, you know, fair and square. Um, Mr. President, thank you.
Uh, any, any other comment to?
Yeah, yeah, and, and maybe this could be something that the council needs to know too. This, this contract is working with a woman-owned business who um w- was asked to look at um working with DBE contractors. Did I misunderstand that? And there was no interest in that? And?
So that, the, the woman-owned business is the subcontractor. And what I spoke with her about was getting the DBE certification or filing under our section three, which would show the economically disadvantaged.
And, right. And then she said that they became too big of a corporation because they, they merged. Is that correct?
They, they are now a large company.
Right, so they wouldn't qualify, but socio as being a woman-owned, that, that's a good thing. Um, so I certainly would advocate for that. And I wondered, would it add to the cost on to have to split this contract up? Does it become more costly to the community to have other subs involved? Do subs do it for profit center? I mean, we know this, that they're not doing it as a charity case. So how do, uh, if, if it's, I mean, would the whole thing have to be rebid and more money put into it to work with DBEs? When this company, you know, was able to work and, and do it all? I mean, it's gotta be more cost efficient, and it's a woman. So I, you know, I'm gonna advocate for that.
Ms. President?
Ms., Mr., Mr. Richardson?
This company, they're doing business all over the United States. This company said, we don't want to be, we, we, we are, we used to be a DBE. We have outgrown that. We are working, take us off the DBE list. We have done business all over the United States now. We want to get that contract on the WBE, not as no disadvantage. We have the advantage. We have money. I don't think we need to spend another second debating that. We are trying to help the disadvantaged companies. This company done told us. It ain't Ms. Kidd's job to go find anybody. The company need to come to, to us and say, I can't find a DBE. Then we can ask Ms. Kidd, do you have any DBEs on the list can do that? No, I should vote. You can find one, let's move on. We're not gonna hold that contract up. Let's go. But we got DBEs that can do this. And we got some companies saying, I'm so rich, I don't want to be a DBE no more. We're gonna take it, we're, we're not gonna even give a DBE a chance. The contractor is one saying, I'm not selecting no DBE. I'm gonna see if I can get this rich company over here to get the contract. I'm not picking on DBE.
They're, they're the sub.
The contractor did not tell us.
They're not, they're not the full, they're not the overall contractor.
The contractor did not tell us. I have done the best I can. There are no DBEs out there that can do that. All this business, how much would a DBE cost? And that ain't our job. They need to go and go, go and put a, put a DBE on there. That, that's not our job to kind of figure out. Are they gonna make more money if they get a DBE? No, 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 that's not our job. They got to have a DBE if one reveals.
What, what, what's, what's?
How, we're trying to figure out how to eliminate DBEs as all we, this, this one hour debate has been. How can we just eliminate a DBE? That's what we had to debate.
Mr. Preston?
Li- Mr. Davis?
Mr. Richardson has gone, gone off the rails again. That's not what this debate, this thing has not been. The debate has not been about how to eliminate DBEs. But you keep going back to DBEs, that's not what the law says. The law says socially and economically disadvantaged. You're trying, you're trying to make the net smaller than it is under the law.
You just described a DBE.
No, sir. It's two different things. It is two different things.
A rose by any other name is still a rose.
Ms., Ms., Ms. Kidd.
Your largest skills on me, Joe. You ain't getting away with that.
Ms., Ms. Kidd. Are, are you still there? Mi- Mr. Archeneque? Are you there?
I'm here.
Let, let me ask you, as, as you, I'm pretty well our subject matter expert on this subject. As you look at the contract and as you put it forward, in, in your opinion, uh, is this process in harmony or is this contract in harmony with the process that you've been working so hard to implement in the city as relates to, to socially and disadvantaged businesses?
In accordance with what our forms ask for the contractor to provide as well as um the information that I have in front of me, I would say no. I would like to give the contractor the opportunity to either provide me with the information of where he has solicited those companies to show that there was a good faith effort. If he can provide me with that, I'll say let's go with it. If, if they have not um done that to show a good faith effort to those others that we have, then I would say let's see if they can do something else.
I, I think, I, I wish we had asked that question thirty minutes ago.
I, I did too.
They kind of cut through all of it, uh, because you, you really have summed it up very succinctly. I get it. I think everybody else gets it. Uh, I think we need to lay this item over. As much as we want lights, uh, there at our Spanish Plaza, it's not, it's not a big crowd. Let, let's do this right so that the spirit of what we have in place is, is honored. Uh, there are those in our communities who think that the fifteen percent is anemically low anyway. We, I get beat up. I can tell you the discussions that I've had over the last seven and a half years and the disagreements I've had with persons over the last seven and a half years over this particular subject matter. And I'm sure all of you are well aware of the pros and cons of the argument. And so with, with it being at fifteen percent, we, we need to make certain that the spirit and the intent of what we've passed is honored at all times. And for her to say that she thinks we need to give this some, some more time and let them make more effort, I'm in, I'm in complete agreement.
Mr. President, if I may just one time, I'm gonna change my position if you would allow me to.
Mr. Williams?
Uh, first of all, um, Archeneque, again, thank you. Um, and I agree with the president uh that your last comment kind of changed my, my, my position. But it also raises the question, and I present this to the mayor himself. How did this get on our contract when the administration did not think that it was in the full spirit of the law? And so with that comment, I, I asked the mayor and Ms. Kidd's office to put together a full report that will come before a committee that the president is uh inclined to assign um to tell us where we are in the last three years with um, with compliance to federal state law, our own ordinance uh with regard to DBE. Thank you.
And, and we'll have that committee ready for ten thirty, Mr. Williams. I agree with you. I think this would be a great time to have that wholesale discussion uh to, to even measure where we are. Because in many instances when we're asked by the public to provide some insight, uh, we know we're generally doing better than we've done in the past. And we know we have one of the best individuals in, in the country through Ms. Archeneque Kidd working on it. Uh, she's traveled with us to national uh league meetings in order to showcase just how uh much progress has been made as related to this subject matter. There's always something we need to be cognizant of, stay on the forefront of, so that we can continue to make progress. And so that committee assignment will be ready at ten thirty. Uh, Mr. Williams and Ms. Kidd, thank you for all your hard work. Ma'am, say the clear.
Sixty-one five-seven, approved settlement agreement and a release of claims. Sixty-one sixty-one establishes the compensation of adjunct and acting municipal court judges. Essential COVID-nineteen items.
Uh, colleagues, on that item, I'm gonna ask that we uh assign it to a committee. It, that will be ready for ten thirty as well. I've been in uh communication with our presiding municipal court judge who informs that we need, uh, in addition to uh, uh, Mr. Stokes, we probably need three or four uh more adjunct judges in that same fashion. And so we'll be setting up a committed, uh, uh, an ad hoc committee dealing specifically with municipal court, and that will be ready uh at ten thirty. So I'm gonna ask that that item with the compensation and all of those uh uh items associated with it be assigned to that committee. Municipal court, those judges, it's the purview of the council. Uh, and we're gonna make certain that we review all of that and, and come back with some, uh, with a response that works for us.
Uh, Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, I have a question, and um, and I guess it's really going back to zero-three-one-three-eight. And I have very high regards of uh Fred Stokes, um, Turner brother, um, have high regards for him in respect. But my question is, I know that the council do pick out, you know, choose the uh, the full-time and part-time judges, but the adjunct judges, that's, that's council, it is just administration, and the council has to vote on. I, I, I don't, question, I mean, I don't understand that.
All, all of the appointment of all of those judges, Mr. Aldis, if I'm off base, uh, please let me know. But, but my understanding is we have the ability to make those appointments. Uh, I don't have any objection to Mr. Stokes, which is why I didn't, I didn't raise the point when the item was, was first referenced. He's been, he's been one of the most active, uh, and, and he's been serving in many respects without any compensation. So I'm, I'm not trying to put an encumbrance uh in his way at all. But I've been informed by our preside judge that we need at least three or four more. And so I want to put us, put a process in place uh that we can uh, can oversee that will ensure that we have names that we can add to the agenda, uh, that will work to fill those other vacancies.
But is that's the council or administration? That's my question.
That's, it's the council's responsibility.
Adjunct is council, and I think there's four or five slots for it. And there just hadn't ever been anybody appointed. Acting, mayor could do. Um, and we only have, there's no, right now, there's no adjuncts, and there's one acting. So they were, they did propose that Mr. Stokes be uh named adjunct, but, and it's gotta be approved by the council, of course, so that he can be paid.
So would it be wise that the council also sponsor this or, or what? If that's supposed to be done by the, the council?
It can go either way, but if you're in favor of them, I, I think it'd be good to, to name someone.
Re- repeat that one more time, Star?
I think either could sponsor, but it would also be good if y'all approve of Mr. Stokes. I think it'd, it'd be, uh, you know, a mutual effort would look good, yeah.
Yeah, again, I don't have anything against Mr. Stokes, but my question was, I mean, does this appointment is by the council or is it by administration? That was my question. And if it's by the council, I mean, is it rightfully just to have only a sponsor by the administration or it shouldn't sponsor by the council?
I don't think the sponsorship matters. The council has the ultimate vote, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Griffin? Uh, Ms. Gregory?
Yeah, and, and Chris, um, on the acting and the adjuncts, um, are their responsibilities different? Uh, adjunct just fills in when nobody else is there? I thought that acting judges did that same thing. Am I on the right path here?
I think in the, in the end, what they do winds up being the same thing.
Yeah, because we've had this discussion with the judges some time ago about the need for fill-in judges. We had discussed, maybe we need more part-time judges. Um, so once we get going with this committee again, I guess we can discuss that. But yes, I thought that acting and adjunct did the same thing.
I have a question.
Uh, Ms. Rich?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Aldridge, on number one, after, um, on this resol, I guess it's a resolution, the compensation, it says any adjunct judge appointed and pursuant to, and then thirty-eight dash forty-one C of the Mobile City Code, or any acting judge appointed pursuant to thirty-eight dash forty-eight of the Mobile City Code shall be compensated at the rate of four hundred. What, what does that involve? Because there, there's different, um, you said the adjunct judges come before the council for appointment, but acting judges, so wha- what is that request about the compensation? What is?
All right, so under state law, the mayor has the ability to appoint an acting judge. So if there's nobody else and somebody's out of town, you gotta have somebody, he can do that.
Mm-hmm.
He, but there, right now, there's no mechanism to pay those guys.
Okay.
And, and so Mr. Stokes, for example, I think has been, uh, acting for quite some time without having a method to get paid for doing it. And so the idea was to just, uh, make that amount the same for both the acting ad and adjuncts, since they're pretty much doing the same thing. But if we had more adjuncts, you know, we wouldn't need any acting.
Right, and the acting judges, are they limited on the number of, um, bench time? They can, wha- what's the difference between? Because one is a council appointment and very visible in the community, the other is acting and doesn't require, does that require council approval? No, because it's a emergency, correct?
It, there is a limitation. I think the acting, if I'm not mistaken, can't, uh, do more than sixty days a year.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
I think the ordinance before us is, uh, to eliminate actu- acting judges. Uh, they would have a, a roster with adjunct judges on it. So, um, if they need a judge, they go down, they don't need to call anybody, they just go down the list. And if you got four adjunct judges, you call this one, this is not available, you call the next one. So it'll prevent acting judges, you'll have a resource where you can, um, keep the court going, you can pick an adjunct judge and keep going. And, uh, they set that the salary as four hundred dollars per docket. I think, um, uh, I called Judge Witten, he's in agreement with that. The administration's in agreement with that. It seemed like to me that's a fair price per docket. So, uh, I agree with, with the council president, but I certainly think we need to, because, um, they are, they are in bad shape as of now. Go ahead on and approve, um, Freddie Stokes, and then set up the parameters about which we create a pool of adjunct judges. Let the county president, uh, bring that to us, and, uh, we'll move on that. I think we need to give some relief to the court. They, they gave us a name. I think we ought to approve that one, but, but going forward, we ought to have a process.
Ab- absolutely, and hopefully by the end of the process, we'll have a, a, a state, a, a listing of judges so that we won't have to, uh, exercise having a, uh, any other judge appointed, uh, even temporarily. So we, we'll have that ready for ten thirty. Uh, but I do think we ought to move forward with, with Mr. Stokes. I don't have one objection, and, uh, look forward to supporting that.
Madam City Clerk. Essential COVID-nineteen item is being introduced for the first time.
Let's, let's go back to sixty-one. What are we gonna do with sixty-one sixty-one?
One second here.
That's the, that's the peg.
I don't have nothing against that.
Sixty, that's sixty-six-one sixty-one.
That's the last one?
That's the item that will be assigned to the committee, Mr. Dave.
Yes, so how long do you wanna hold it open?
Uh, two weeks approximately.
Okay.
Madam City Clerk.
A resolution is being introduced for the first time, sixty-five zero-one-eight, ordinance to amend the, and restate chapter sixty-five and sixty-two entitled tree protection and management.
Um, this is, as you all know, something that we've been discussing for some time. We have a committee meeting beginning at one o'clock this afternoon to go over chapter sixty-five. Chris Arledge sent out the, um, the latest draft of changes that had been suggested. He also, he, he sent a very long email with three different documents. So if you all will just take a minute and read through those, um, again, discussing that again at one o'clock this afternoon, and I'm guessing that there will be some, uh, people who have signed in and would like to speak. But, um, what we need to do is just go through the suggested changes that we have on this working draft, see where we are on those. I know Mrs. Rich has a, a suggested schedule of fines that we can look at. And, um, the other thing that Chris sent was, um, some suggested changes from the folks on the tree commission. I've asked Peter Toler if, uh, he would be on the, uh, call with us at one o'clock today. He has a PowerPoint that he needs to show again so that everybody can see it. I think that will answer some questions, and for those questions that are not answered with the PowerPoint, Peter is there to, uh, to try to explain exactly what it is the administrator is looking for in this new chapter sixty-five. So again, that's at one o'clock this afternoon.
And this'll hold over?
And so this needs to lay over, um.
Well, it'll hold over one week automatically.
Yeah, so it, one week, one week anyway, and after that, you know, we'll just have to see where we are.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, ma'am.
Zero-three-one-six-two, concurring the appointment of Mary Stuart Nelson to the Altapoint Health Board Directors. Zero-three-one-six-three.
We wanna take that one up today. One-sixty-two.
I'm not, again.
Me neither.
Okay. Zero-three-one-six-three, appoint Bridget Goff Archer to the Human Relations Commission. Zero-eight-one-six-four.
Can we take that one up, the, the appointment, please?
Yes.
Cause it's, it's, uh, the person who was sitting there resigned, so I'd like to see continuity. Thanks.
Zero-eight-one-six-four, approved purchase order to train, to train US Inc. for replacement Central Air heating system components for the Sanger Theater, five hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars. Zero-eight-one-six-five, approved purchase order to Stivers for, Severs for, is it Severs or Stivers? For, for, um, crap, uh, crew cab pickup, thirty-three thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars. Zero-eight-one-six-six, approved item-based bid award to Newman Traffic Science and Vulcan Inc. for street name signs and brackets. Zero-eight-one-six-seven, approved purchase order to CDW Government LLC for the HPE Nimble Adaptive Flash Backup Data Storage Array, forty thousand six hundred ninety dollars and thirteen cents. Zero-nine-one-six-eight, appropriate two hundred fifty thousand to Bishop State Community College for an advanced manufacturing center. Twenty-one-one-six-nine.
Hold up, hold up, uh, in, in. Ms. President?
Ms. Richardson?
Yes, um, and talking with, um, Mr. Sykes over at Bishop State, um, it seems that the county is giving, um, three hundred and fifty thousand.
Three hundred?
Talked to him, yes.
Three hundred?
He told me three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
He, he told me, Jenna, did you talk with him yesterday?
I did. The county's doing two different ones, and they're doing one for the advanced manufacturing and one for health sciences. Uh, I think it, it may be three fifty, yeah.
It's, it's three fifty.
Totally.
Totally, totally. And, uh, I would like to see us, uh, ask the mayor to raise this, at least at three hundred.
Yeah, I also asked about naming rights because both of those that the county is doing will have naming, naming rights attached. And I, I think it would be a good idea if at least whatever we do, uh, we are able to some, some way showcase that the city is a partner. So I would like to have some kind of naming rights as well. I don't think Dr. Sykes had a problem with it, but it's just something that we need to, uh, make sure that is known that we'd like to do that.
Okay, uh, Mr. President.
Mr. Williams.
I did speak with, I did speak with each of the council members, uh, Bess, I didn't get a chance to get to you, uh, on this subject. Um, let's realize that the county is, uh, the, the biggest part of the county funding is the city of Mobile. And, uh, and Mr. Sykes, um, Dr. Sykes, excuse me, a good, a really good friend of mine, uh, I've been talking to all along, uh, is, um, is perfectly agreeable to, to the two hundred and fifty. It is, is extremely pleased to, to have the support of the city council and the administration. Um, they are part of our workforce development. And he assured me that he would come back to me if they needed more, uh, or come back to the administration if he needed more. But at this point, he was, he was quite pleased with the, uh, the, uh, participation of the two governments here in Mobile, in Mobile County.
Mr. President.
And Mr. President.
Uh, Ms. Richardson, and then Ms. Gregory.
Um, they, with, with construction, they are midway, about fifty percent, um, for the equipment, uh, that they need, uh, to go inside of there, they need eight million. They had, they, they have, uh, raised three and a half million. They, they're not, they're not halfway, uh, where they are. They, they, they need, they need funding. I don't, so I asked him, how much are you going to need to get, to put the, once you build your building, to put the equipment in there to train workers, what, what do you need? I mean, they didn't have me. How much do you have? Three and a half million. So I said, we need to, uh, I, I have to at least give him three and a half million.
Ms. Ms. Gregory, and then Ms. Dave.
Yeah, uh, one thing we can, we should keep in mind is, e- if we give two fifty this year, uh, it doesn't mean that all the funding will be raised and they will be moving in by October of our budget year, twenty-twenty-two. So if they do need more funding, uh, we will have another opportunity in, uh, the next budget year to make another contribution. And, and I mentioned that to Dr. Sykes, and he certainly understood. So two fifty may be all we can give out of this budget, but next year, as they continue fundraising, uh, and trying to get all of their equipment in place, uh, we may have another opportunity, or they may have another need for us to have that opportunity to contribute more in the way of, uh, economic development and workforce development dollars. So either way, uh, and, and I think probably the mayor and his administration have a better handle on what we can afford this year or not.
Mr. Dave.
Thank you. I go, I'd like to go back to Mr. Williams' point. I, I, and first, let me start by saying, I'm fully supportive. Uh, I'm behind supporting a hundred, uh, Bishop State a hundred percent on this project there. So I think it's an important project. I think it's the types of skills they are gonna teach in this new facility are the types of skills that need to be taught in order to, uh, allow our workforce to, uh, fill the jobs that are available in our, in our, in our community. Having said that, forty-five percent of the county's revenue comes from the citizens, people who live in the city of Mobile. Uh, so of the, if the, if the, if the county's doing three hundred or three fifty, half of that's already being paid by the people we represent. And now we're talking about doing another two fifty from the people we represent. So I, I think, I think the two fifty is a good number. I'm fine with it. But, but if, if every time that something comes along, we match the county, then the citizens of Mobile are gonna be paying seventy-five percent of whatever that is instead of half.
If I could comment, this, this is a first read, this is a first read, so, uh, and it's, you know, over the fifty thousand. So we can, we can talk among ourselves or, you know, come to a different closure for next week on the amount. I, I, um, echo Councilman Dave's, um, idea that we're meeting the, the fifty-fifty percent on the two fifty for this particular project. If the county was doing another one, um, that might be something we could look at in the future. And certainly, the timing for next year, budget year, would be when we could dip into our economic incentive money. Uh, this does fit that, so, um, it doesn't mean that we're closing the door and this is the only amount we would give towards this worthy project. But this is gonna be rested. We're not, we won't vote on this today, uh, regardless.
Mr. President.
I, I heard Mr. Vice President, and then, uh, Mr. Richardson.
Uh, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President. Just real quickly, I would like for you to ask if the city clerk could, uh, invite Dr. Sykes to come, uh, next Tuesday, uh, to city council and whether to address, you know, the city, this for the city can actually hear it out his mouth, the wonderful good things that's going on at Bishop State, and, and where their money's going to.
I, I totally agree, uh, Madam City Clerk. Let's, let's extend that invitation, and we look forward to having Dr. Sykes join us if at all possible. Uh, Mr. Richardson.
Mr. President, um, I would just say, if we go back down through the years, when, when it comes down to a major project that's gonna benefit our city and our area, the county and the city stood, uh, stood shoulder to shoulder when we got ready to recruit Airbus, TK, Ulster, you go on down the line, you go to, um, to the, the, the Mitchell Council Center and see whether or not the city and the county was in step with what they were going to give. And although all of the money's coming from the same people, they were in step. They don't have to give it. Where, where the money's coming from has nothing to do with you giving it. You know, the, the, the money we, that we get from, uh, the city every month is coming from the taxpayers that live in the county and in the city. We, that don't have no effect on what the city is paying us. So I, I, I say if, uh, if we can do more, we ought to do more because, and, uh, listening, uh, to what this, uh, advanced facility is going to do for work, uh, workplace readiness, I was just amazed. I was amazed at that. That's all I want to say, Mr. President.
I, I, I don't disagree. Uh, we'll, we'll have an additional week to gain even, even, uh, to gain uh, even more information, and hopefully President Sykes, uh, will be able to join us on next week. Uh, and then there is always the possibility, the potentiality of including them in future budgets as we, uh, move down the line. I'm incredibly proud of the vision, uh, that Dr. Sykes has cast for Bishop State. I've been meeting with him regularly, uh, from when this was just a thought in his mind to now actually seeing this program being built out and almost at the point of fruition. So, uh, proud of him, proud of Bishop State, uh, proud to have this center in the heart of District Two on a newly reconfigured Broad Street. And so, uh, look forward to all of that, uh, and hopefully we can gain additional information between now and next week. I think all of us are pretty confident that we want to support. As a matter of fact, uh, Madam City Clerk, if you could list all of us, unless there's an objection, if you could list all of us as sponsors of this item, I think that would be most important. so that the community knows that we are in, uh, and we are unified in wanting, uh, to be supportive of Bishop State.
Good idea.
Yes, ma'am.
We won't just start our next meeting, right?
I, I don't think we can hear you, Madam City Clerk. Oh, boy, was it Mr. Williams?
Okay, um, yeah, that was Mr. Williams.
I'm sorry.
Uh, twenty-one-one-six-nine, authorized contract of Osprey Initiative for removal of litter on Dog River, Three Mile and One Mile Creek, two hundred thousand dollars. Twenty-one-one-seventy, authorized contract of Ica Construction Corporation for Langen Park Pavilion Improvement, five hundred seven thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars.
Excuse me on that one. Um, I, I just have a, I have a question of the administration. Um, I, I'm not opposed to seeing those improvements out at Langen Park by any means, and this is, uh, CIP funds, but, um, and this will rest as well, but if I could get some information on how the, the administration decides what projects move when? Uh, this is a twenty-twenty-one, um, funded project, and I know that I've been working on improvements for Medal of Honor, uh, with CIP, that goes back two years, um, and I'm hearing it's coming, but I've heard that a lot, and I just didn't know what the theory is behind the administration's moving of contracts, especially when it comes to our city parks. You know, are they timed lined? You know, what makes something come up, um, in this budget year and others wait? So, I, I, I would like some documentation on the understanding of the administration's protocol. And I don't, I don't see the mayor in the list, but, um, certainly would appreciate someone in that administration giving me this information prior to this vote. Thanks.
Ms. President?
And, Ms. Ms. Richardson?
I have the same exact, uh, problem as, um, as was stated about Ms. Rich, um, for the Trinity Gardens Park and for, um, the Purgatory Park. I have projects dating way back that, um, people have contacted me about on a regular basis. And, uh, city is, has not moved on, on them. And here we are with a twenty-twenty-one project already out the gate and working. I don't have an understanding about that. And the other thing I want, I want to ask, Ms. Kidd, do we have a DBE, a certified DBE on this one? And you made sure to look at the next one also, to see if we have a certified DBE for twenty-one-one-seventy, twenty-one-one-seven-one.
For the, um, Langen Park Pavilion, yes, sir, we have two certified DBEs on this particular one, um. And for Tremere Park, uh, we have an MBE. Um. And a W, I'm sorry, two WBE.
And we go again with the same thing. And we go again with the same thing. They have, Ms. President, they have next week to get this right. They going with an MBE, WBE, everything but a DBE. It did, uh, then, then, if we, if we don't do something to, to, to get this back on track, next week it's gonna be a ZBE. So, if they don't have a DBE, I'm not, I'm not supporting, Ms. President, so.
Mr. President? Mr. President, I want to keep saying, the law does not require they be a DBE-certified business. The law requires that they be economically or socially disadvantaged.
I don't disagree. Uh, and I want, I want, um, Ms. Kidd, I want you to tell me what not, uh, on these two, on, no, on the, on the last one, twenty-one-one-seventy, uh, uh, B, the WBE, whatever you got, DBE, W, wherever you have over there, are they certified as disadvantaged contractors?
No, sir, and I have talked with, uh, Integrity as well as Chapman, uh, and they are supposed to be working on that.
That's all I'm saying. Uh, we, we can move on, because, uh,
Right.
if, if you back up in next week, I'm gonna ask the county to void it down. To send a message to the industry, come to us right, uh, if you're not going out wrong.
Madam City Clerk?
Twenty-one-one-seventy, authorized contract of Ica Construction Corporation for Langen Park Pavilion Improvement, five hundred seven thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars. Twenty-one-one-seventy-one, authorized contract with Tenno Construction for Tremere Park Improvements, Restaurants, Concession, and Community Center, four hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. Twenty-one-one-seventy-two, authorized performance contract with Navy League and reallocate five thousand each from District Four and Five Capital Discretionary Money. Twenty-one-one-seventy-three, one-seventy-four, one-seventy-five, authorizing contracts with William Shaw, Jeremiah Moody, Andre King, Technicians Gulf, Gulf Coast Technology Center, um, respectively forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, forty-nine thousand, and fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Twenty-five-one-seventy-six, accept permanent drainage easement from Debbie Pedway for the twenty-eighteen CIP Trinity Gardens Area Street Drainage Improvement Project. Thirty-one-one-seventy-seven, amend the ESG, um, uh, program year twenty-nineteen and twen- in twenty, action plan to change one of the nonprofits providing services for homeless prevention. Tw- thirty-one-one-seventy-eight, authorize application and acceptance of a DECA, CDBG, and CV funds. Forty-one-seventy-nine, one-eighty, are declaring structures public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Sixty-one-eighty-one, approve award of special bonus to the Parks and Recreation Employee of the Month for March, James Richardson. Zero-three-one-eighty-two, and sixty-one-eighty-three, um, we're adding these. Zero-three-one-eighty-two is reappointing Gary Witherspoon to the Public Park and Recreation Board of the City of Mobile, um, Lad Memorial Stadium, Lad People Stadium. Um, sixty-one-eighty-three, determine an appropriation of two hundred fifty thousand to the Mobile, to Mobile County for the construction of the Africa Town Heritage House Museum.
Where's that money coming from? You know, just asking.
Who is it coming from?
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget? Yeah, I, yeah, I would like to be, uh, listed as a sponsor also.
I would also.
Let's, let's list everybody. Madam City Clerk? Let's list everybody, please. This is a great, this is a great project, and I appreciate everybody's support.
Okay, announcements.
Ms. President?
Well, I guess we'll wait. Mr. Mr. Dave?
I'd just like to go over these, uh, you know, lay the rule on if it was zero-three-one-sixty-two, appointment of Mary Stuart Pelson to the Alter Point Ford Six, zero-three-one-sixty-three, appoint Bridget Goff to the HRC. Then you have the declaring the structures, you have the special bonus to Parks and Recreation employee, and you have the one we added, zero-three-one-eighty-two, reappointment of Guy Witherspoon. Okay?
Sounds, sounds good, Mr. Dave.
Oh, we have the, uh, did I mention the, uh, performance contract with the Navy League? And reallocate five thousand each from District Four and Five Capital Discretionary Money. Okay?
Yep. Sounds good.
Um, Mr. President, are we gonna take a five or ten-minute break in, or five minutes?
That would, five minutes, I think, would be great for everybody, and then let's come on back and conduct the great people's business.
Thank you.
All right.